Proposed charter amendments for the county police department and we'll start with Sheriff Neer. I believe some questions were forwarded to you regarding the cost and the setup of this new police department. Would you address that? I think you told me that you could do it in ten minutes. Yes, please come forward. And if you have anyone else with you that you want to join you?
Okay, I don't recall getting any official request or cost analysis. It was in one of the emails from a citizen. The cost analysis, I believe I submitted to the email to you.
Okay.
Which would determine, right now we have four bureaus. If you take forty personnel, which would be the sheriff's department, from what's now four bureaus, we'd only have requirement for three. We had three up until two thousand and three, and we haven't added that many personnel. That's another story. I've got two captains retiring at the end of two thousand and fourteen. One of those captains will not be replaced because they're going back to three bureaus rather than four. That salary will pay the bulk of a chief's salary. Also, if you go into the sheriff responsible for forty personnel in two divisions rather than two hundred and twenty-five personnel in twelve divisions, obviously that pay would not be what it is today. The council has set that pay at the end of before the election year. The difference in that pay would make up what difference it was between captain's salary required to pay a chief's salary. In addition to that, the one captain this retiring will be replaced, be replaced with a lieutenant. A lieutenant being promoted will get a five percent pay raise. That is not going to come close to the salary that a twenty-year captain, twenty, thirty year captain, hasn't been captain for twenty, thirty years, but been with the department that long, been a captain for an extended period of time, there will also be a difference in there. So there will actually be surplus money staying within the organization as it is now to make these changes.
Okay.
So it would not be any additional cost to the taxpayers.
For personnel?
Yes.
What about the cost to change the cars, the stationary, the badge? What about any of those?
Those costs will all be absorbed through our asset forfeiture fund, which is not a penny at the cost to the taxpayers.
How long have you been working on this proposal? It came to us two weeks ago, but how long have you been working on it?
As far as the formal proposal, about six months, but it's been discussed over an extended period of time. It's been discussed as far as ten years ago.
So it's not a new idea?
Certainly not.
Okay. Do you have anything you want to say about it before the council begins asking you questions?
No, all I've asked is that the council allow the citizens to make the decision if they want to retain the sheriff's department as it is today, or establish St. Charles County Police Department with an appointed qualified law enforcement professional, appointed through a process, not just one or two people saying, you know, who that individual would be. So it's actually a change, it's a reorganization within the organization, basically on paper. If this is passed and the voters pass it January first, two thousand and fifteen, everybody would be doing the same thing they're doing today. You'd have the same number of personnel, nobody loses a job, nobody has to reapply. It's simply a reorganization and the citizens, it'd be seamless for the citizens, they would still get the quality of law enforcement that they're getting today.
It seems to me that one of the biggest changes is the fact that the appointed through this committee would have to have credentials, a degree. Can you describe those credentials as you have it proposed?
As proposed, it'd be a college degree with fifteen years law enforcement experience, at least six of those in a management position, and which, of course, now, none of those requirements are necessary.
What are the requirements as it stands right now to run?
Resident of the county, registered voter, free of felony conviction, and twenty-one years of age and older. And my, another one of the points that I wanted to make is, earlier today, I was down in the city of St. Charles. I've been selected to participate in a board that selects the new police chief for St. Charles City. It's a six-person board, there are forty-eight applicants from twenty-one states. The qualifications are basically the same as what I requested, except for St. Charles City has to have a master's degree. If St. Peters, St. Charles, Wentzville, O'Fallon, the municipalities within the county have requirements, professional requirements for the head of the law enforcement agency, why shouldn't the third largest county in the state of Missouri have qualifications for the chief law enforcement officer of the county?
That makes sense. One more question and then I'll open it up. Why the change in name?
Thank you, thank you.
I mean, we have a chief of police of St. Charles, of St. Peters, of O'Fallon, we have a sheriff for the county. Why the change in name to a chief of police? Because sheriff, that designation is usually elected, is that why?
The sheriff, the office of sheriff throughout, well, throughout this county somewhat, and even throughout the state, the sheriff, in many areas is considered a political position rather than a law enforcement administrative position. You know, as far as the name, you know, you stumped me on that one.
Okay. Do other counties have a chief of police? Sheriff is not something normally for a county chief officer, is it?
St. Louis County has a chief of police.
Okay.
That is appointed through a process. They also have an appointed sheriff, despite their charter.
Okay. Okay, open for questions.
Question, question number one. Counting Missouri and maybe surrounding states, how many counties of our size, three-hundred-and-fifty-thousand people, do not have a system as you proposed? In other words, you know, what I'm asking is, are there other counties our size that still have this total sheriff elected position?
There are no other counties our size in the state of Missouri other than Jackson County and St. Louis County. Green County make, they're around, they're a little over two-hundred thousand. They all are still under the operation sheriff, the office of sheriff. But here again, in those counties, that is the office of the sheriff, it's not the sheriff's department. They are totally independent from the county government. They still depend on them for budgets and personnel. But by our charter, the sheriff's department is a department of the county government. So that's one of the major differences.
I'd just like to ask some of the other, see, we have some other professionals here from our county, get their opinion on this. One of them would like to step forward.
We have several of you, why don't you all come forward? We're not singling any. Oh, you don't think they want?
Yeah, they do, yeah, they do.
I don't think the bashful type to me.
By way of introduction, my name is Ron Newbauer, former police chief in St. Peters. I have forty-one years of experience in law enforcement. While I was with St. Peters, I became the president of the International Association of Chiefs of Police, had the opportunity to view and talk to law enforcement agencies worldwide. I currently serve as the director of the Eastern Missouri Law Enforcement Training Center, the police academy here in St. Charles County. This is not the first time that I've talked about this issue. Back when we had a charter commission, I testified that I honestly believed that the county should go to a police department rather than a sheriff's department. I'm going to depart from my comments from then for a second to say that I think that those of us in this county are very fortunate to have the quality of enforcement individuals that we have in the sheriff's department, loaded with talent, good professional people. I first came here in nineteen eighty-eight. Today, we have the only individual that has been elected that was qualified at the time of election. The problem that I, one of the problems that I see, given the, what the charter requires for a sheriff, you take a very popular individual in this county, has zero law enforcement experience, nothing, comes to my academy and gets his license to be a peace officer. That individual can run for election and because they're popular, become elected and run your sheriff's department with absolutely no experience. I don't think that anyone would like that to happen. It's the training and the education and experience that you can build into your requirements that will give you that professional, that continued professional. By establishing a proper selection process, you can weed out the political nature of appointing a police chief. I mean, let's face it, there's nothing more political than electing a sheriff. There's an absolute need for experience. I believe you asked the question about other counties in the nation. All the counties surrounding Washington DC have police departments, they don't have sheriff's departments. Anne Arundel County, Montgomery County, Arlington County, they all have county police departments. They don't have sheriff's departments. There are many, many areas throughout the United States that have gone to a police department rather than a sheriff's department because they found that they can get a lot better management out of their department by doing that. So it's not, it's not a first, it's not a first. And it's something that I honestly believe will give you the individual who has experience. I mean, let's face it, law enforcement today is very technical. It's not like it was twenty or thirty years ago, very technical. You need people that have that kind of expertise, you need people with that kind of experience to run the big business that you have in the sheriff's department. I mean, I don't know what part, what portion or percentage of the county budget is consumed by the sheriff's department. You don't want to put that in the hands of someone who has no experience.
Okay. Good comments. Would any of you like to add to that?
Sure, I'm Chief Mike Force from like St. Louis Police Department. I've been there for about twenty years as the police. I've been in law enforcement for a little over thirty. And I also testified at the charter committee meetings. And my concern was the same as Mr. Newbauer's that, and the example that I used at the time, I had a twenty-one-year-old son at the time who had lived in the county for some time. He had voted, had no experience in law enforcement, but technically could have been elected sheriff of this St. Charles County with no experience whatsoever. And again, I think if you have a very popular individual or someone who can gain that popularity through the people that he knows, I think you run the risk of having a chief law enforcement executive that does not have the experience or the training or the expertise to run that department efficiently. And that would be my concern. And as I thought of it, I thought, well, how would we do that with an elected sheriff? I don't know how you do that. How do you limit your pool in such a way that the public is going to be able to elect someone that they want when you've limited that pool so much by saying you have to have a college degree and you have to have this, almost has to be appointed.
Okay. Mr. White, does that answer your questions? Do you want to hear from anyone else?
I'd like to have a talk on the topic of morale in the department, how that would affect the morale in the department and the daily function of the department.
If I might, once every four years, that department gets thrown into turmoil because of the election. It's divisive, there are people that choose upsides, they back one individual or another, and it's dog eat dog.
I respond to that too. In the eight elections that I've been through, at one time, there was as high as eight people in primary. Six of those were from sheriff's department. And regardless of what the rules are or anything else, these candidates go trying to garner support from this deputy and that deputy. Most of the deputies just want to stay out of the process altogether, but they fear if they don't support this person and he wins, well then, you know, what happens to their career then? If you have, excuse me, elected position, and my primary purpose in this whole thing is get a qualified person to run law enforcement in St. Charles County. If that does indeed occur, that automatically eliminates the other issue. We've got one deputy running around after now, campaigning for the next election, and I guess he knows more than I do about what my plans are. There have been other instances where two years before the election, one of the deputies would get campaign signed, stick him on the side of his truck, and drive around for two years. So by the time these violations are brought to the mayor's commission, the elections are over before the mayor's commission even has time to resolve it. So those issues are automatically resolved with the appointment of a qualified chief.
Tom, what is the absolute, give me, give me, I guess, two or three of the most important reasons? I know you state them, I want to make sure I'm very clear and specific here. What are the most specific reasons why you want to do this? Number one, being number one, two, and three?
Being number one is, I want to ensure as much as possible for the future of St. Charles County, which is still growing, once again, third largest county in the state of Missouri, ensure that they have, we have, a qualified individual as a chief law enforcement officer of the county. That's the primary reason for this whole thing. Contrary to what some things have been said, it's not about me, there's no hidden agenda, although you may get a couple chuckles from the gallery here after a while. That's the primary purpose. The second purpose is to eliminate subjecting all these personnel within the sheriff's department that don't want to engage in a political process, to ensure that they are free to go about their jobs and not be concerned about who's doing what, who's supporting whom during the election year, and then four to six months after that. In some cases, a week after the election, there was wholesale transfers, and didn't have a darn thing to do with the people's ability that was in those positions. Campaign workers.
Wholesale transfers, well, you mean, this was before you were sheriff or?
Yeah.
But now we have human resources that you have to go through, right? It's a different process now?
No, no, same process. If you're a pay grade eleven, you can be assigned to any pay grade eleven position. If you're a pay grade ten, you can be assigned to any pay grade ten position. If you're a sergeant, you can be assigned to any division. If you're a lieutenant, you can be assigned to any division, same thing with captain. And there have been, been situations where a sheriff was elected and spent more time in woods hunting, more time in boat fishing than in the office, running the largest law enforcement agency in the county. I don't think taxpayers would have liked to have known that, but it was there. The last six sheriffs that took office all started their position with on-the-job training. Not a single one of them had any management, formal training, or administrative qualifications or training. So it takes, some of them did a good job, some of them not so good. Some of them it took a year, year and a half. Like I said, some of them never got it.
Okay, so you qualified dysfunction, what, is there a third reason or is it those two mainly?
Those two mainly.
Okay, so.
And the third is to let the citizens of the county decide what type of law enforcement leader they want for the future.
Okay, so as far as the qualifications, what if, what if a council member decided to talk to you or the sheriff's department and say, Sheriff, why don't we still let it an elected position, but why don't we consider changing the qualifications on the charter? What about something like that, if somebody were to bring that forward? I mean, how, would that work or not?
That's been discussed, and I've discussed that with several people who would be qualified, not just within our department, but from outside the department, law enforcement managers. Overwhelmingly, they said they'd love to have a job, but they're not about ready to engage in politics and go through campaigning to try to get the job to enhance their career.
There might also be a legal question on that. I believe that sheriffs are constitutional officers of the state, and I don't know that you can change the qualifications of the state law.
And also limit your pool to residents instead of twenty-one states.
Absolutely. But then how many, how many, hold on, how many?
Finish up.
How many, well, this is a big issue for me.
I know, I know.
It's a big issue for me.
Well, some of us have just about solely unincorporated areas, which I'm one of them, so it's, I get a lot of calls on this particular issue, but as far as the deputies are the, your command, your captains and your lieutenants and sergeants or whomever, who would qualify for this position?
Right now?
No, yeah, under the change, where the change.
I believe there's four. Within two years, it could be as many as six or seven.
Are they captains? Do you know?
Some of them are.
Mr. Cronin?
Can I add something to the morale issue? Whenever you speak of change in an organization, you're going to get pushback. People want the status quo, they want things today like it was yesterday. So regardless of what the change is, there's going to be people that are going to be upset, there's some people that are going to like it. If the change is accepted and voted by the voters of the county to make that change, there'll be some upheaval, it's a very natural organizational dynamic, that will eventually settle down because it's different. And only because it's different, you're going to get pushback.
Okay, Mr. Cronin?
I have a question for Sheriff Neer, and I would like an opinion on this from Chief Fitch as well. A sheriff, you know, I know that the cost of this change in name would become out of asset forfeiture money, but those assets forfeiture monies can also be used to buy squad cars, which would decrease the expenses out of the general budget, maybe we could get the deputies the raise that they so, so often, so they definitely deserve. My question is, have you computed what it would cost to change all the badges, all the, all the, all the pockets, all the cars, the buildings, the stationary, et cetera? And that would be the first question. And the second question, I did a little research on this, you can incorporate all the changes that you, that you want in this bill and still call it sheriff's department, still call the person with the higher qualifications as appointed to sheriff. And my other part of my question to Chief Fitch is, could you operate your department with the same constraints that you have, being called the sheriff of St. Louis County, even though you were appointed, and your deputies would be called deputies instead of policemen, okay? Would that be, create a problem for you?
You want to go first, first question? I'll pick up if you're finished.
First question, approximately, the biggest expense is in remarking cars, and that's about three hundred dollars for approximately eighty cars. And once again, that's asset forfeiture money. Badges are anywhere from fifty to eighty-five dollars apiece, that would be a hundred and eighty-five, no, it'd be a hundred and fifty-eight minus forty, if you want to figure that out. But once again, that cost absorbed by taxpayers' money. You talk about the asset foragers buying cars. The same money doesn't go into paying salaries, it goes into the county buying cars. You're talking about two different animals. So it's apples and oranges. You can't attach asset forfeiture funds to salaries or revenue for raises.
But it would free up money in the budget to use for that, and so on, that's my, my thing. So would you say maybe a hundred thousand dollars would cover everything?
Sure.
With name change?
That's probably excessive.
If I could just add to that, and maybe talk a little bit about supplanting on the federal asset money, because we use a federal asset money, you cannot supplant that money. That means, for example, you had a hundred cars in your budget, that's what I buy a year, about a hundred cars. And I said, well, you know, wait a minute, let's make it eighty, I'm going to use twenty, buy twenty cars out of asset funds? You can't do that. That's supplanting your budget, that's illegal. That's a legal use of that money. So you cannot use the money to supplant your regular budget items. Does that make sense?
Yeah, I understand that. What do you think about the name?
And then, in the, I have a unique perspective, I'm the only county police chief in Missouri, but there are many county, there are thirty-two different county police departments in the United States. By the way, the United States is the only country in the world that still has sheriffs. England ended theirs many, many, many years ago. And could I still do my job as an elected sheriff with all the qualifications that you talked about?
That's not quite what I'm asking. I'm asking if all the, all the qualifications, all the changes are made where it's appointed office, okay?
An appointed sheriff.
Appointed sheriff, just like exactly what Sheriff Neer is requesting, okay? But instead of calling the county chief of police, it was still called the county sheriff.
I guess that would be something that would be unusual, I'm not really sure because it's hypothetical. But I guess then it's really semantics, whether you call it county police or county sheriff. County sheriffs generally in this country are elected, and I'll be honest with you, we've had a county police department since nineteen fifty-five. I've been working there, I'm on my thirtieth year. I've never heard anybody say, by the way, we want to go back to an elected sheriff. I've never heard this happen. We have a sheriff in St. Louis County, in case you didn't know that, it's an appointed sheriff, and all he does is run the jail, not the jail, all he does is run the bailiffs in the courtroom and deliver civil process. They have no arrest powers, they have no uniforms, they have no marked cars, so your process is a little bit different, what you're going through right now. But I wouldn't want the job I have today if I had to run for office for this job. And we have a hundred million dollar budget and eleven hundred employees, so it's a lot bigger, you know what you're talking about here? And I'm fortunate that we don't have to run, we don't have the political upheaval every four years, we just don't have to deal with those issues. And as an outsider looking in, and about a third of my employees live in St. Charles County, they would probably tell you that what you're looking at is very futuristic, it's something that is a progressive community that you probably would want to take a look at, and ask your voters if that's something they'd be interested in. I don't think it dilutes anything as far as the process goes.
I will, I can. Joe brought up an issue a while ago about your constituents out in your part of the county. You have a rural part of the county, there's really two rural portions of St. Charles County, more south, and Jerry's in the north. St. Charles County is no longer a rural community. St. Charles County is an urban community with two rural areas on extremities. We're more, our model is more closely related to St. Louis County than it is Montgomery County, Missouri.
Do you have anything to add that hasn't been said?
I, I've got a little different perspective of the fact, I've once worked with the sheriff's department, at the St. Charles County Sheriff's Department, as a former chief deputy. I've worked with Tom, I've worked for Tom, and Tom has worked for me. And for him to be able to stand up and bring this forward as the sheriff in this community, who has served with his heart and soul for all these years, I support him. So I'll leave it go at that.
All right, any other questions from the council?
Did you want to add something you want to say?
No, only, only to reinforce, only to, and I know you're living times, I'm going to spend a lot of time, but only to reinforce what's been said. Sheriff Neer just said it. Folks, as you know, I'm the new kid on the block out here, from, from even living out here and not working out here for three years. So these gentlemen, I, I yield to my elders, if you will.
Thank you.
You've been in the trenches down in the city for a long time.
But let me, let me just say this to reinforce this, and I can say this now because I'm a resident, we're no longer a rural community here. This is, and we should see what's it going to be like in five years down the road and ten years down the road. And what I see this as trying to, although he has, Tom Neer has a professional organization now, this is an opportunity to have not only a professional organization, but some professional leadership that would come in if, if he would step aside or not be elected. I cannot, I cannot see myself doing a job, having to be elected. And the other side of that, and this will be the last thing I say, I think as an elected official, or as a non-elected official with a chief of police sitting here, would be more responsive to the council and to the executive, because that's who, that person, he or she, would be reporting to.
I agree a hundred percent.
But let it not be forgotten, let it not be forgotten. I don't care if you're the sheriff, the chief of police, the marshal, we all serve the public. I don't care if you're the sheriff, the chief of police, the marshal, we all serve the public, and that shouldn't be forgotten in this conversation. And if I have the last word, all I'm asking is you give the citizens the opportunity to make that decision, make that choice. If there's any issues come up, if it would pass tonight, it's been said, well, this is being rushed through, it's being rushed through. It's not being rushed through. I just ask you to give the citizens the opportunity to make the decision. There's over two months before the November election. Any citizen, any group of citizens that has any questions or any issues at all that would help them make their decision, my door is always open, they can come in, they have coffee, sure, I'm there, so I'm not out fishing some fish. They can come in, they can call, they can email, and anything that I say, I can document. Thank you for your time.
And I would just add that you are unique in the fact that you have been appointed sheriff and you have been elected sheriff.
Yes, ma'am.
That's, that's a unique qualification to bring this forward. Any other questions or comments? We'll move on.
Well, I'd like to get a positive point of view, I mean, we can't just have the ones, the silent sides, you know, the chief, so I think there's some guys from Sheriff's Department that might want, I'd like to ask some questions, too.
Okay, thanks very much.
I'd like to thank those folks for-
Yeah, thank you for coming.
Come on out, guys.
And, and I was thinking that we were going to leave them out, I thought that they would probably shoot during public comments. But if you have questions that you would like to ask them now-
It should be equal opportunity to both sides, so you want to hear both sides. So I think, I mean, maybe Craig or Carlson and Dave, you guys want to, is anybody, Dave, hey, Dave, do you want to say, you guys, I think it's fair to have equal balance, I don't mean to put anybody on the spot, though. Or Craig, do you want to come up here, too, or?
Are you?
Huh? Hey, Keith, right, those, these guys, go.
Through the chair.
Oh, no, go ahead, I mean, but you're going to have it both sides.
Just please understand that we still have two more topics, and I didn't mean to cut you short.
I wasn't prepared to speak, but I do have an opinion on it.
Okay.
I mean, first put out here that I work side by side with a lot of these gentlemen here, I have the most, highest respect for them, they're all very qualified for their positions. However, people are entitled to their own opinion, and my basic concern here is taking a ride away from the voter. I know a lot of the issues brought up is professionalism, professionalism, I've been with the Sheriff's Department for 23 years, I've attained the rank lieutenant, and at times the elections are, cause a little dissension among the troops, however, that's part of the process of democracy. We have, as past Chief Newbauer spoke, that there's a lot of departments around the bigger cities that are, know, in Sheriff's Department, but in the same fashion, there's also departments that are still Sheriff's Departments. You have San Diego, you have Los Angeles County, you have counties down in Florida, Broward County down in Florida, Jackson County here in Missouri that's more comparable to ours, who are still run by elected sheriffs and do a fine job. I think we can establish qualifications, and that is very important. What they said is true, that a sheriff, sheriff can just come in and be elected out of the academy, that is highly improbable. We have, unfortunately now, I don't know what Sheriff Neer's plans are, but unfortunately we got a sheriff who's really brought some stability to the department, had done a good job. However, eventually he's going to retire, and rightly so. The gentleman's worked a long time in law enforcement, so we have to look for a future, and I do look for professionalism, and I think we could establish something as far as an elected sheriff for qualifications, you know? We do want somebody who's had a college degree, some management experience and things like that, so that is important. Another concern of mine is the cost factor involved. As Sheriff Neer said, we're not eliminating any jobs, so there's still going to be the same amount of individuals working, it's just going to be in different agencies. So I don't believe that there'll be less supervisor needed, because you're, you're still supervising the same amount of people, and then you're adding the salary of the chief. So the, the cost factor does need to be looked into, I don't have the exact figures, so I can't provide those to you.
Okay.
So that's just some of my opinions on it.
Thank you. Do you have anything you'd like to add to that?
Yeah, having worked on both sides of the river, I've been a police officer for about 25 years, I've seen both sides of the spectrum, and when they talk about removing the political aspect, that's not true. Chiefs are responsive to the county executive, he's going to be responsible to you guys. That's, that's politics right there. You're not going to remove the politics by just appointing this person. They all get called in by their mayors and city councilmen and so on and so forth. So there, there's really no getting around that in any process or any law enforcement agency. I, I think what Mr. Newbauer says, he has the greatest respect for Sheriff Neer, as we all do. And I guess based on what they're saying, we're led to believe that he's the only and the last qualified sheriff that would ever come up for St. Charles County. I don't think that's true. I think the very fact that Chief Fitch mentioned that there's only 32 or 33 county police departments in the entire nation says a lot right there, that most of them are sheriff's departments throughout the entire nation. The cost of it is, is a factor. We've been coming up here for four or five years now, asking for pay raises and other things, and we're told that there's no money. Departments have been asked to cut their budgets, mandatory furloughs, and you're never going to divide one entity into two separate entities and save money. It's going to cost you more. And whatever the initial cost is, it's kind of like charter. We're going to get the teaser rate for the first year, and then what's it going to cost us down the road? At the same time, you're saying, hey, you need to furlough people, but we're going to add an extra expense to the county budget. I, I just don't think that right now is the time, although I would be in agreement with the way the process is being laid out now, that the county executive is going to appoint some citizens, and they're going to sit and be the interview board for the chief and recommend someone to him that he will then recommend to you? I don't know. I, I know my mom doesn't know anything about what a chief needs to be. You know, a citizens' board is not the way to go. If it has to go, it needs to be a board of individuals like this to do the interviewing process, because they know what's necessary. Or the International Association of Chiefs of Police, not a citizens' board and recommend to the, to the county executive. No offense to him, but he doesn't do law enforcement either. We're led to believe by what all these guys said, that it takes the professional to know the professional, but the process that's being proposed is not professional.
Okay, do you have any other questions for them, Mr. President?
Did you, Dave, you guys fill out a survey, what, do you know what the results were in the survey? And what's across the board with the Sheriff's Department, what, what's the results?
I don't know what, the sheriff put out a survey, I don't know what the results of it were. I know quite a few individuals I've talked to are not in favor of it, I can't speak for the whole department. I just, I think that people want to remain where they have a choice. This is currently the only elected law enforcement official in the county. All the rest of the chiefs are appointed, and he's accountable to the citizens, and that's an important part of democracy. To have this individual accountable to the citizens, and you people up here to speak for these people, for the citizens, you're elected to do that, and I think it needs to remain like that. It needs to be selected by the citizens. Put up her vote, yes, the election years are rough, look at the presidential election right now. That's just part of the democracy. People have different views, and people have different standpoints on things, and the majority of people went out, and that's what democracy's all about, and when you have officials that are running for an elected position such as sheriff, you're going to have people with disagreements.
Okay. Does any other council member have any question for these gentlemen or anyone else here on this topic? Okay, thank you. We'll close topic of Bill 3880. And we're, we're not going to have time to tackle both 3879 and 3881. Is there a motion to do one or the other?
Which one's in?
One is the basic charter changes that are proposed by the county executive, and the other has to do with the smoking prohibition.
We know the smoking stuff, I mean, I, we understand this.
I can give you a real quick update on the smoke.
You could probably do that during the council meeting, go to, don't you think? Is there anybody here that you want to hear from on that issue?
No, I think, I think we beat that one to death.
Okay, and I believe Mr. Crismer, if, if we can go to Bill 3879, then I'd be, believe Mr. Crismer would like, would like to make about two minutes of comments. Just, just get to the bottom line.
Okay, bottom line. My name is Rich Crismer, Director of Elections. You know who I am, the reason I announce who I am and what office I am. I'm very concerned for my voters, I usually come before you to help the administration of the elections. Today, I want to talk about how this bill, 3879, was drafted. There are seven, maybe eight different, different topics. This bill is not fair for you to have to vote on this thing tonight, because it's got so many different issues on it, and your yes or no means yes or no on everything. Steve Almond, Chuck Bros and I lived under Hammerschmidt. Hammerschmidt was a bill, I'm sorry, it was a case, before the Supreme Court in Missouri, and they clearly stated, one bill, one subject. No double subjects, no Christmas tree. The whole reason we had Hammerschmidt in the first place is the legislature was trying to Christmas tree. Let's put transportation, healthcare, taxes, road construction.
Are you speaking of the vote to the voters, or the vote to the charter amendments?
I'm talking to the charter amendments. You shouldn't, you should either table this or defeat this, you are not following Missouri constitutional law. Article three, section 23, no bill shall contain more than one subject, which shall be clearly expressed in its title. There's no express title anywhere in here.
Rich.
So you got the, you got Hammerschmidt and the Constitution saying, you can't draft a bill with this many completely different subject matters. The one section four actually takes powers away from the elected officials. Have you talked to the elected officials in the last two weeks to see how they feel? Have you talked to the people who started the charter, who wrote the charter, and said, why did you give independence to these elected officials? Why did you do that? This thing by saying, notwithstanding any provision of the charter, and that's how it starts, you take away all the other powers.
Okay, are there any questions for Mr. Crismer?
I do, if you, if you're saying, Rich, saying this is illegal, then it wanted to be your obligation not to put it on the ballot?
I, first of all, I talked to Secretary of State's office today, they said that I have to accept it if you bring it before me before 5 o'clock, but I can challenge it in court, and I shall, because it's violating state constitution and the Hammerschmidt of the Supreme Court. Now, Supreme Court ruled that in bank, means the entire Supreme Court rule, that you cannot put more than one subject, and you better have a title.
Okay.
And you had to be, I'm afraid for my voters, I've seen so many times ballot issues that come in with two or three things, and they slip something in, it happened in November 2009, just slipping it, had nothing to do with 911, but increased the capital improvement tax fund from every seven years to 25 years from now, just slipped right in there. You can't be doing that, they can't, you can vote or not, they should not be doing this to you, they shouldn't be putting that kind of pressure on you. I suggest either defeating it or tabling it, but it is not ready for primetime, it is not ready to go on the ballot this fall. I looked at the language, and the language of the ballot language isn't even proper. It's got several subjects just on one ballot, you have on ballot question number one, you have four different topics. Ballot question number two, you have two, ballot question number three, you have two. How can our voters vote on something like that? It's happened in St. Charles City, they tried to increase the mayor's salary, they put three different salaries on one ballot issue. The lawyers were nice enough to come and say, Rich, can we do this? And I said, no, you can't, and they changed it.
All right, thank you. Would you comment on that?
Hammerschmidt doesn't apply to county charter provisions, it's a state constitutional provision related to state legislative bills going through the General Assembly, and the case, the Hammerschmidt case is specific to that constitutional provision, which does not apply to our charter. If you look at the history from the very beginning with the charter amendments, there've been multiple amendments, often offered in conjunction with each other. If you look at St. Charles cities, which I've looked at in the past, they've done the same thing. So Hammerschmidt just is not applicable to charter provisions from the St. Charles County charter.
That's what she's saying, but there were, there were cities who went to Hammerschmidt that were other cities. Okay, definition of gross mismanagement, you're going to create a brand-new bureaucracy of five new people appointed by the county executive to supervise people.
We're going to discuss that when we get to that part of the agenda.
I appreciate it, but please, for our voters' sake, one issue, one title. Don't have these voters having to vote yes or no on two or three and four different issues on one ballot. I have to protect my voters, and I think I have to protect you. She said the Hammerschmidt doesn't work, Constitution does. Constitution's very clear, what it says, one issue, title, specific title.
Thank you. Sure, what, what do you have?
Joanne, or Chuck, or somebody, Steve, maybe? I don't, I don't know, but let me, just, can I ask a question here? Let me make a question. We did break this up, at first, I know we requested it, we break it up into different questions, and it was one-
I think you have an amendment to do that.
Okay, so we did break it up into three questions? Is that right, it was one, right? It was two questions?
It was two, and you requested at the last meeting that there be a separate item for the one that created a new provision.
Okay, are there, I just, just, do you, are there three topics, five topics, how many topics are there, how many questions are there?
I'm here with Steve.
Well, I guess it's, yeah.
I think that's what he wants to address.
Yeah, on Hammerschmidt, I think the first day I was in this courthouse, as Director of Administration, that was one of the first things I asked you, does, does Hammerschmidt apply to county government? And you told me clearly it does not. We've been proceeding on that basis, and as far as the problem of, you know, and I think, I think that most of the things, when we divided it in the one bill into two, basically we took the new section and put it by itself, all the rest are pretty, I think, pretty non-controversial. But the, the problem of you having to vote on all or none, Mr. Crismer, as he said, was in the legislature, and he knows enough about, about procedure to know that you can divide the question if you like, and you can vote on each one separately, or you can vote to take them out if you don't like them. I mean, no, nobody sitting there today has to vote on all of these when there's one you really don't like. You can have a vote on, on one or all.
Okay, thank you. If there are, Mr. Cronin?
I have a question for Mr. Almond. If this was split up a little bit more, is that a problem for the administration?
I don't think it's a problem, it's, it's just, you know, how many, how many times do you want the voter to vote? I mean, when you take a bunch of them, put them together, what you're really risking is that there'll be opposition to, a little bit, little opposition to each of them, none of them will pass. So if you really want to, you know, I mean, there's, you could make an argument for having 15 separate votes, but how many people you think are going to take the time to, you know, to vote 15 times? I'm afraid by the time they get to the end, they'll just move on to the next. But that's, that's up to you, how you, how you, how you group them, and, you know, that's your, that's your choice.
Thank you.
We really do need to adjourn the work session so that we can clear the table and be ready for the council meeting. So we're adjourned.